Thank you, and I will call this regularly scheduled meeting in Bridgewater Town Council to order. We are in the traditional unceded and unservended territory of the Mi'kmaq people. We are very fortunate to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I don't think so. Motion to approve the agenda as circulated, please. Councillor McDonald, seconded by Councillor Vizier, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Agenda is passed. Just a quick announcement that yesterday, if you would have seen the proclamation posted on the town's website, that yesterday was We're Red in Canada Day, kind of bringing attention to the fact that heart disease is the number one killer of women worldwide and the leading cause of premature death for Canadian women. So that proclamation is, it would still be on our website and it was shared on all our social media channels as well. So obviously something very sensitive and serious that we want to pay people's attention to. Are there any other announcements from members of Town Council? Still kind of a quiet time, there's not a lot going on.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, yes. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Well done, Deputy Mayor Tanner. Nothing like having a Town Council meeting on Valentine's Day. I know, nobody can probably think of any place they'd rather be than right here. Nice, Councillor Colquhoun. That's awesome. Can't really top down announcement, so we'll move on. We're a little ahead of schedule, but I know, I know our delegation is here. Mr. Ernst and Mr. Green are here to talk about, from Titan Marine, to talk about the Federal Ghost Gear Fund. And so I'll just remind you gentlemen that you have 10 minutes to address Council, and I'll turn it over to you for your presentation. And Michael, you'll have to reshare your screen.
Thank you. So hopefully this is not going to take up part of our 10 minutes, but we will. I'll just do my opening intro as may, then I'll bring up the slide presentation. I'm just representing or I'm working with Titan Maritime on the, they work with the Federal Ghost Gear Fund, and I'll just do a quick introduction before Zach Green, the CEO of Titan Marine Maritime, sorry, takes over. I know many of you from my time in council, I live over in the Mahone Bay area, I was on the municipality district of Lumberdale Council, and during three years or four years of that term, I served on the Waste Management Committee for Region Six. I've always been interested in municipal waste. It is one of our biggest, or one of your biggest costs that you have to deal with. And also, I've also been interested in legal waste. So having the opportunity to come in with Titan Maritime to talk about the Federal Ghost Gear Fund and how it can impact municipalities and the province is for me a wonderful opportunity. So I'm going to bring up the screen and then Zach Green is basically, sorry, let's try that again.
So you are sharing your screen now. Yeah, you're sharing your screen.
Okay, I'm sharing the screen now.
Yeah, we can only see a little sliver of your presentation.
All right, there we are. You got it now?
Yep, there we go.
Good. So this is the first time actually we've worked with the MJSB on their computer system. We've never had this problem with any other municipality we've approached. Wonder why that is. Anyway, Zach, you there? I know he signed in.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, it's over to you and I'll scroll through while you talk.
All right. Most people here, I'm sure, are familiar with Mahone Marine. It's a business I own, right outside Mahone Bay on the 103. About three years ago, we were getting more and more requests to do commercial work on the water. So I took that opportunity to start another company and started acquiring workboats. And we've grown very quickly over the last few years. We've ended up doing jobs for Department of Fisheries, the Coast Guard, Dalhousie, and a lot of of ocean economy tech companies in Dartmouth we do a lot of work for. And then last year, we started doing more and more for fisheries and oceans when this Ghost Gear project came out. But generally speaking, Titan Maritime, we do salvage work. We also do surveys. We do ROV surveys. We have a ROV technician, so we underwater remote control vehicle. We do inspections on wharves and vessels that have sunk, et cetera. So it's a, we have a great team of skilled people that have a merit of experiences. And this, this project is a keen interest to myself and some of the others, and bringing Mike on board who has a very keen interest in Ghost Gear as well. So I'll hand it over to you, Mike, if you want to describe a little more about what Ghost Gear is.
Thank you very much, Zach. In your council package, we have sent quite a bit of information, so we don't need to repeat that. But there are a few photographs here of work that Titan Maritime has done in recovering gear. On the upper left-hand side, you'll see the green image. That is an abandoned or illegal, illegal and abandoned agriculture site off Oak Island, which they actually cleaned up at their own expense. The other photographs are taken of Ghost Gear that has been retrieved from an abandoned fish farm in St. Margaret's Bay. Acronym that's always used or sometimes used for Ghost Gear, it's right there. I know how municipalities and politicians love acronyms. I'm not sure if you can sort of pronounce ALDFIG, but there we are with all the terms that are associated with it. We have to sort of stress here that this is not an exercise in laying blame on anybody. It is a problem, it has been created, and the Federal Ghost Gear Fund is probably one way of looking at trying to solve that problem. So Zach, do you want to go from there?
Yeah, last, two years ago, the Department of Fisheries. Yep. Two years ago, the Department of Fisheries Oceans put out a program to, for contractors to put up proposals to pull up much Ghost Gear as possible. Titan Maritime put in a proposal, didn't get it the first year, but then they approached us the second year and said they had some funds left over and asked if we would be interested. We took that opportunity with our team who just, who really went to town with it and we interviewed a lot of fishers around the South Shore to find out where there might be a lot of gear. We found that was by far the best route. Not all contractors did it that way. So we did it everywhere from, say, Margaret's Bay, all the way to, almost all the way to Yarmouth is where we were working. And we were very, very successful. I think we pulled up about 35 tonnes of gear in 40 days, which was a huge success in my mind. It was almost half of what all the other contractors put together did. So we're very happy. We have the, not only do we have the people with the skills to do it, we have the right equipment. One vessel in particular is very, very efficient for pulling up, pulling up gear. So we're very happy with that. And we really hope that Fisheries Oceans next year will come back with a program like this. Because it is a real problem. There's a, there's so much gear out there. When we're pulling up this old gear, we're finding lots of lobsters and so many fish that are caught in the nets, and that's the, the real problem. I'll get back to you there, Mike.
Thank you, Zach. So Zach's just stressed there about the issue of Ghost Gear. Of course, the term that's sometimes used is ghost fishing. It keeps on fishing indefinitely. And if you can imagine a lobster getting into a trap, it is, the trap is not raised, and so therefore another lobster will come and eat that lobster. I just found out the other day that Clearwater Foods was fined, I believe, $200,000 for not retrieving its traps one year. They have the contract for offshore fisheries for lobster. So the federal government is starting to take this issue quite seriously, and it's a problem that's been compounded over the years. On the considerations, everybody comes in normally with an ask of council, so these are the asks that we're looking at you to consider because we know, and I know from experience, municipal government is always the most approachable level of government. I'm sure you're probably tired of hearing that. To consider writing a letter to the federal government, encouraging the continuance of the Ghost Gear Fund. We can actually provide a pro forma for that. And in the long term, you're probably going to think, well, there's not much Ghost Gear that's going to come up along the Hay River, but I'm sure your residents could be very, might be very interested in assisting in the cleanup of local shoreline areas and collecting any non-hazardous items and then seeing that those are properly recycled. As far as the municipality is concerned, this may have some influence on your waste stream management, particularly at the Weynup settlement, because the federal government is looking at the responsible disposal of the material and its recycling. And the interesting aspect that has come out of this through our presentations to different municipalities is that municipal waste is dealt with by municipalities, but it's the province who dictates how that waste is dealt with. So I think that's about all that we have to say at this stage. However, we would like to open for questions, and I'm going to collapse this window if I may, and we will take questions. Zach and I will take questions from Council.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any councillors who have questions? Our delegation today. Councillor Thorburn.
Yes, being from a fishing town in Shelburne, there was lots of nets and lots and lots of traps and buoys and ropes, and I think now even that the traps are metal, not wood like they used to be. But there's thousands and thousands and tons and tons of mess left over that washes up partially on some of these, especially after some of the big traps for the, for the, from the fishermen that's using the waters all the time. So I'm really impressed to see that we're finally going to do something, try and retrieve it. And my real question is, some of that stuff, we should be able to be resalvageable and there should be some market for some of that stuff, would there not be, if we recycle?
Zach, do you want to answer that? And then I'll check in with anything else.
As far as the traps, anything that comes up that we bring up that is usable, or if it has a tag on it to say whose it is, it does get returned to its owner if it is in good shape. That's part of the program. But most of the gear that we pull up has been down there a long time and it's in pretty rough shape.
The recycling part of this is something the federal government is taking on, and in your package, there is a link to the Ocean Legacy Foundation. They have the only Ghost Gear recycling site in Canada and it's located in Richmond, Vancouver. If you go there, they actually will show you a sorting sign of the material they will accept and the material they won't accept. One of the issues with recycling it is that the material is contaminated and therefore it's very, very difficult for recyclers to deal with. It may have sand in it, oil, other detritus. And also, if it has marine growth on it, it has to be clean. But the traps can be either recycled or it can be sold for scrap metal. Certain parts of those traps, I believe, the little black flap doors, for example, are high-density polyethylene, and that can be recycled. And I'm actually doing some work on recycling and contacting some different sources and seeing how it can be dealt with. I just wanted to bring along as well, I don't know if you can see these, but this is sort of some of the material that if you can, if I hold, I don't think you see that in the camera. Oh yeah, here we go. That's a lobster band. Those are quite common on the beaches. My wife and I walked a beach last Sunday, Backmans Beach, which is on Second Peninsula. We found 22 of these lobster bands. These are the rubber bands that they put around the lobster claws. And they get washed overboard because, of course, if you're on a heating lobster boat, it's not easy to keep tidy and stuff gets washed off the side. We actually collected about 90 of those last year. The only positive of these is the fact that they are fairly biodegradable because they're made of rubber. But you will find small bits of line like that, and that's polypropylene line. And of course, as you know, it breaks down into smaller and smaller pieces like plastics. There is, there are different estimates as to how much of the stuff there is in the waters around the world. And you'll hear numbers from 500,000 tonnes to a million tonnes of Ghost Gear being deposited annually in the oceans. Not all of it floats, a lot of it sinks to the bottom. So we are really dealing with a big issue here and is something, of course, that is a legacy for the future of not only the fishing industry, but for others who are going to be following in our footsteps.
You mentioned.
Sorry, I'm doing a bit of preaching. I'm doing a bit of preaching there. I'm not doing, answering your questions, but if you do have questions, please ask.
Yeah, see, you mentioned that, that Clearwater had a fine. Is there a way to track who doesn't pull their gear up now? Like I understand some of these have been down there for years, maybe there was no mechanism in place, but for example, if, is there anything to just make sure that if someone put down 100 traps, that 100 come back?
Zach, do you know of anything?
It's up to the fishers to report lost gear. And they do, but we've had no luck using the reported locations. And if it was actually there, because this equipment is, it's expensive and the fishers want it back, and then they usually try to grapple and get it back. If they don't, then it's, it's really very, very, very difficult to get without the use of very expensive side scan sonar, very time-consuming to find one or two traps. That's for stuff that's actually lost. Now, what, what Mike was talking about is Clearwater, that's completely different. They decided to store their traps offshore, just put them on the bottom, which nobody on the inshore fishery, I don't think anybody does that.
So if, if, I'm just trying to think of ways to, you know, so this fund is obviously, you know, it's a bank account filled by the federal government, which means it's filled by the taxpayer. So if, if, if this gear is expensive and it's lost, would they be making an insurance claim, for example, to, you know, cover the, the cost of their lost gear? And is, is that perhaps another way for the government to find a different person to pay for this fund versus the taxpayer? Like other industries, right?
I'm going to guess that there, it's too small a value for an insurance claim, trap by trap. But when you're talking to thousands of fishers out there, it's compounds. And unfortunately, over the years, it's not just lost, it's also discarded, unfortunately. So there is a lot of that as well that has to be found. There is no deposit system for the traps, which, you know, that maybe something like that someday would be good. Like the way that we use on tires or pop bottles or something to make sure they actually come back.
It's as well, Mayor Mitchell, Council is probably aware of the EPR that's coming into the province, Sixth Centre Producer Responsibility. There's talk about this in Europe of bringing it in on fishing gear. And that might be another way of having funds go in to deal that are not coming from the taxpayers, they're actually coming from the manufacturer of, of the item. As the EPR is funded by the manufacturer of the packaging and other material that we already pay for in our purchases, but Nova Scotia doesn't take advantage of.
Any questions from anyone else on Council? So I know there is a request attached to that, so that, that will come back to Council. We, we generally deal with the requests from an item at a future meeting. Gives us some time to formulate more questions if we have any, and we know where to reach out to both of you gentlemen, if questions do come up.
All right, thank you. And just to go to Councillor Thorburn, we actually have done a presentation in this penalty of Shelburne. And the town of Shelburne actually passed a motion to support the continuance of the fund. We didn't, we just sent them the information, they automatically passed it. So they're very, it's very positive. It's very nice positive feedback that we're getting from all councils that we've approached. I think in closing, I'd just like to thank you, Mayor Mitchell and your councillor for your time tonight. Please, if you have any questions, let us know. And Ms. Porter-Low, thank you very much for your patience and all the various emails and getting this all together. I think this is our seventh presentation. We have three more to do, and we are now on the verge of tackling the MLAs. So, and then it'll be the MPs.
That's great. Thank you. Councillor Thorburn, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I did. That was my question. I, I would assume that you're talking to all the councils in Lumberdale County as well, and the Ward, to make sure.
Yes, I'm, oh, sorry. I'm tackling all the, all the councils within Region Six.
Okay, that's 12 of us.
And it's, we have had no problem getting permission to make presentations. The only one who won't allow a presentation because it's being made by a company is Queens. So that'll have to deny, that'll be a different strategy I will use with them. But every other municipality has been quite willing to discuss this matter. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we are doing this to, for the Federal Ghost Gear Fund, for the continuance of it. The Titan Maritime has done the work, but this is just another part of the work that they've recognized. They feel sort of like an outreach program to inform people.
Great. Thank you very much, and thanks for your presentation.
Thank you, and good evening. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Take care.
Bye-bye now.
Our next item is the, we have the minutes from the January 24th, 2022 council meeting. Are there any errors or omissions with those? Seeing anyone raising their hand, kind of a motion to approve the minutes as circulated then, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner, seconded by Councillor Thorburn, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none. Minutes have passed. And then we're down to 6.1, which is in planning proposed business park expansion rezoning. I see Mr. Brown is here.
Yeah, thank you, and good evening. I will share my screen as I have a presentation for you this evening. How's that look?
Great.
Okay. So as Council is aware, construction of a new interchange is underway on Highway 103 that will open access to lands northwest of the highway. So in anticipation of the completion of that work, staffer introducing Council to municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments in the area of budding the new interchange as the, as the town entertains opportunity for commercial and industrial expansion. And then this graphic is simply to illustrate how the new diamond interchange will directly tie in with Logan Road, adjacent to the Mitchell Tire Plant. Note that the interchange opening should not suggest fall 2022. And so existing zoning. Currently, the land north of the 103 is zoned industrial, M1, comprehensive residential, R3, and institutional, I1, and that would be the park view site. This, this map, this is a, this is a portion of the, of the existing zoning map. But we've also overlaid a conceptual street layout from the business park master infrastructure plan. And we also thought beneficial to show the land ownership pattern in the subject area. It's presently divided into town-owned land, that would be the red, Nova Scotia Power land, and blue, MODL-owned land. And that's again Park View and Panther Way, and privately-owned land, which is shown in, in yellow here. So highway commercial zone. As it relates to the town-owned land abutting Highway 103, staffer proposing a new zone be created in the land use bylaw, tentatively called the highway commercial zone. The intention of this zone is to efficiently, excuse me, efficiently facilitate development towards the traveling public in the more visible areas surrounding the new exit. towards the traveling public in the more visible areas surrounding the new exit. The development approval mechanism would be the site plan approval process. Site plan approval is an as of right process with conditions. Primary conditions being adhered to is, is our criteria of the land use bylaw. So there's site plan approval criteria, in this case related to developments in commercial zones found in the land use bylaw. The criteria include minimizing negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood with respect to off-street parking and loading facilities, noise, lighting, fumes, and other nuisance or inconvenience. It deals with compatibility, you know, one property to the next, landscaping and buffering, location of pedestrian walkways, and the management of storm and surface water are all key components to the site plan approval process. The application requires a detailed site plan and building elevation drawings, which staff review against the criteria in order to grant the site plan approval. So this is a staff-led approval process. Council would, would only be involved where an appeal of the decision to grant the site plan approval is received. As adjacent property owners are given 14 days to do so. In all, the process typically takes approximately four weeks to permit issuance. So this highway commercial zone would allow a select list of highway oriented uses permitted through the site plan approval process. And so, subject to change, the proposed list might include automobile sales and rental, car dealerships, drive-through facilities, and those would have to adhere to the drive-through facility design requirements of the land use bylaw, gas stations, hotels, motels, restaurants, and retail. And we'll also mention that there would be opportunity for those, those more light industrial type uses in the land behind the proposed zone that would require, you know, additional, additional street and service infrastructure to be built. But there will be that opportunity in behind the strip along the, the 103 as well in the, in the existing business park, although there aren't many lands still available there. And so the highway commercial proposed zoning standards would provide flexibility in the sighting of main buildings, as well as the creation of the lots. So, you know, this is a, a table that we have, the land use bylaw has in, in for each zone. And so maximum front yard, so it starts with the setback requirement. So this is distance the buildings can be located away from the, from the respective property lines. So in this case, the, the maximum front yard setback, it, it's a maximum. We don't always have maxims, we typically have minimum. But we are implementing here or proposing to implement a maximum front yard setback around 50 feet. And then the minimum front yard setback would be nil. So they could in fact develop anywhere between zero and 50 feet from that front property line. The minimum rear yard, 13 feet, minimum side yard 13, and minimum flange yard 13 feet. I mean, that's consistent with the, with general commercial type zoning. Maximum building height, none. So no maximum building height, minimum lot area, none, and minimum lot frontage 39 feet. So what it does, you know, these reduced minimum frontage requirements, such as 39 foot requirement along the front, would provide for a smaller and more compact lot configuration. While the, the absence of, you know, maximum lot area and frontage requirements could also facilitate larger lots for larger developments. So creating flexibility is the idea. You know, regarding our existing policy of the municipal planning strategy, staff have found there's already support for these proposed amendments. I mean, such as, you know, current policies, like C1 enhanced Bridgewater's role as a regional employment and service center. We want to minimize negative impacts and promote compact commercial development and foster attractive commercial development. And that's really where the site plan approval process can make a difference. It really is a great in-between process, it takes a little bit more time than, than the typical, you know, permitting process, a few more weeks. But, you know, with the criteria that we have in the land use bylaw, it can really promote compact and, and attractive style developments. I will go into detail with respect to the future policy work as this is a report and presentation to introduce these amendments and attain council direction to continue with the work of policy review and change. So there would be more on that coming. So the proposed zoning map, you know, as far as the delineation or, or, or location of the proposed highway commercial zone boundary, at this point, the proposed zone includes both sides of the connector road, and I don't know if you'll be able to see my, my, my mouse, but that would be the 103 connector. And then the St. Philip's Street connector comes down towards the bottom of the map as well as an area, you know, towards the, the top of the Foley's Lane development. So, well, to the, to the west, or sorry, east of the, of the interchange in, in that area. So that is how the, the zone is, is being delineated today, or this proposed zone. Any other zoning changes aside from the highway commercial on town owned lands would be subject to the forthcoming review of the planning, towns planning documents. So the, the park and, and the, the other adjustments to the industrial or residential lands would be, or, or institutional for that matter, would be subject to the, the review of the planning documents. We thought it'd be beneficial for council and the public to gain perspective of the space with example development footprints. I don't know how well you can see these. We've shown a hotel, and this is, this is just playing around, a gas bar, car dealership, retail development, and, and two restaurants. And these examples, they were taken from the local, local context and basically cut and pasted it onto this aerial map. But to scale, showing what may be available in terms of space. The proposed extent of the new zone needs to be large enough to accommodate the market demands we are and, and will face with this high visibility and easily accessible area. We need to also consider the site constraints. The staffer in the process of firming up through processes to delineate environmental, environmentally sensitive areas as well as, as the discussions that staff are, are having with the province and Nova Scotia Power Inc. So there needs to be enough land to accommodate the type of development that, that, that staff foresee being, being available in this area, but while also keeping an, an eye on the, the site constraints that, that the town does have in that area. So based on that information, you know, along with the further analysis of the proposed infrastructure and the forthcoming public participation meeting, that will include some, some direct stakeholder engagement. The proposed extent of the highway commercial zone may change from what is proposed or presented today. Any changes will be rationalized when staff come back to council with a planning analysis report and, and draft amendments. So as mentioned, this report is, is an introduction to the amendment process. Therefore, the, you know, this rezoning is conceptual at this point in time. Staff are also aware that the planning document review is, is beginning and that these proposed changes will be reevaluated in the larger planning context of the area northwest of the 103. And just to note that the, the new zone would require staff to redesignate the proposed zoning area from the industrial to general commercial designation on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. Importantly, when staff are evaluating zoning changes, engineering comments are crucial to understanding implications around traffic and, and servicing infrastructure. Since the, the master infrastructure plan was based on, on existing zoning, staffer recommending a, a review of that, the report and associated studies as it relates to this area of the business park. The town engineer has noted that changes to accommodate faster or different growth may require investments that, that do not align with the current tenure capital plan. This review of the 2021 master infrastructure plan for the business park, other information regarding any site constraints, the public input and continued discussion regarding potential developments will all help to inform the amendments that will be brought back to council for decision. Tonight is recommended that council direct staff to continue work on the concurrent amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to consider a highway commercial zone in the business park, including holding a public participation meeting on March 2nd. And that would be the next step, and, and shown on this slide are the, the opportunities for public comment in red. We are at step one, and this is the introductory or preliminary memo report and presentation to council. Next would be the public participation meeting. You'll see we have done a fair amount of planning analysis, but there is still more work that needs to be done prior to coming back with the planning analysis report and, and draft amendments for first consideration. And I'll just end on the slide deck showing again the today's proposal for the extent of the highway commercial zone. And so I'll take any questions, of course.
Perfect, thank you. And that, that meeting, public participation meeting on March 2nd will be virtual, I assume?
Yes, yes, but yeah, it's a virtual meeting, it'll be 6:00 PM. You can register by contacting the community development department.
Thank you. Councillor McDonald, this question.
The maximum front yard requirements that you mentioned, would that create a situation much like on King Street where snow has to be removed? It can't just be cleared to the sides?
It, it could. I mean, our, our, our planning documents, the philosophies that, that we have promotes that type of built form and, and very walkable and pedestrian, pedestrian friendly type development. But if it was a, a similar type of street wall that was created right up to the sidewalk, yes, that, that is a, a consideration. A potential issue with, with that type of development is, one, solid waste receptacles and where to put those, and two, snow clearing. I wouldn't imagine this, this area to develop quite in that fashion. And there are setback requirements on the side, so it wouldn't be quite like King Street where there, there wouldn't be space in between the buildings necessarily. Depending on the type of development, we could have a retail development where, where it looks like that Main Street feel where it's, you know, a bunch of different suites lined up. But I, I would suspect there would be space either in the front or, or along the sides for, for snow in this case. The, the, the point with the zone standards being, you know, we will, we will promote these developments to be as close to the street as, as they will, you know, agree to be. But we also are, are allowing them to be set back. So I, I would foresee developers taking the opportunity to put a little parking in front.
I guess just to piggyback on that before I go to Deputy Mayor Tanner's question, it, it could be that, because what I envision may, may or may not happen, but I envision developers buying larger lots and putting multiple commercial developments there. And if that was the case, then like, like a Dartmouth Crossing type setup, for example, that wouldn't be the town that actually clears that snow, it would be a private contractor that they would bring in, correct?
Correct, yeah, it'd be like, you know, our Eastside Plaza, for example.
Yeah, okay. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Just two quick ones. So Nick, what, what would be the, the expected timeline to sort of wrap this up? Because I, I know we've obviously had considerable interest in this space already. And, you know, you want to have your ducks in a row before you start, you know, having truly real interest in here.
Yeah, no, as you say, there is lots of interest. I know economic development, the town is, is looking to get into a marketing plan as soon as possible. You know, for, for these amendments, we'll go through the public participation process. You know, that's taking place very early March. A few things need to, need to be ironed out. We really should have the, the review of the master infrastructure plan completed just to understand any servicing, any infrastructure implications. I mean, whether that, you know, whether we wait to come back for first consideration, I would like to say yes, but I don't know the timeline associated with, with that project, with that review. So, you know, if that can happen in, within two months, then, then yes, that would be the timeline then to come back to council would be right around two months.
Okay, and I'm sure this would get fleshed out during your public consultation and so on, but I didn't see office buildings in that list. And I would think that maybe we might get an innovation technology company wanting to build, very few people want to build office buildings these days, but you may get it, given the, the tenant that's across the road. And who knows, they might want a big branding on, on a big tall building.
Yeah, I mean, offices are, are an interesting one. You know, we, we allow offices pretty well anywhere in town by, by, you know, different mechanisms. But yeah, definitely still a consideration. And I know we, there is interest in, in office development in, in this area and in the business park in, in general. So, you know, you're right, the public participation meeting will go a long way as we do do some, some targeted stakeholder engagement as well. It, it may, we may come back with offices being, being a permitted development. What we really need to figure out is how much space do we really have with the constraints? So that, you know, we can promote this, this, you know, highway commercial best and highest use in that area. And, and for me personally, and through, and through our planning analysis and, and, you know, through staff, the staff meetings and, and work that we've done, I mean, offices are kind of on the, on the cusp of that, so. Yeah, it's a good point.
Councillor McDonald, you're next.
This just came to mind, so I haven't had a chance to go through our documents and, and kind of check it out myself, my apologies. But are there requirements for receiving areas? So I know like in, on King Street, there's not a lot of choice, but for a large truck to stop on the road impeding traffic to, to do deliveries. Do we have requirements for what kind of receiving areas are, are provided so that it doesn't impede traffic or, or safety or parking?
Yep, we have requirements for parking areas and we have requirements for loading areas. In the historic downtown commercial C1 zone, the loading area requirements are, are waived just because of the physical space there, but that wouldn't be the case in this area. So yes, there, there, there will be, there, there is built into the land use bylaw already loading area requirements.
Okay, perfect, yeah, I thought I saw that before.
Councillor Caldwell?
Looking at the map, it appears as though there may be room to expand the zone to the northeast. Can you just explain why the zone ends where it does?
Yes, so yeah, you noticed in the, the northeast, so towards the top of the map and, and towards the residential area, the, the zone boundary aligns with that, that street, that conceptual street. The reason for that is that we kept this zone on town property. If we had gone to the other side of that conceptual street, this zone would have then been overlaid on, on private property. I mean, it, it's, it's possible, but it, it just complicates things a little bit to then, you know, involve private property owners in this rezoning process. The thing about that area, so that northeastern area shown on this map is that, you know, the streets are being built on the, on the other end, towards St. Philip's Street, so back down towards the bottom. Those connector roads are being built. The infrastructure, the streets and services in that upper portion, closer to the residential, not, not being built yet, so there is still some time to, to play with that area. I would consider that more of a phase two or phase one B of this, this new business park area. The planning document review, so, you know, we are getting into taking a comprehensive look at the land use bylaw, at zoning, at, at the policy framework that we have. And so during that process, we could- And so during that process, we could see an expansion potentially to to this proposed zone or or retraction. You know, that two year period or so to the completion of the planning document review process will give us a really good indication of of where we're going. So that area up there is is it's a little bit more tentative, I would say, at this point. But that's the reason why the zone boundary is shown the way it is. It's just to stay on the on on private property or a public property, sorry.
Council McDonald.
So if one of those private property owners wanted to rezone, they could apply to rezone if they if they wished to, is that right?
That's right, yeah, yeah, they can always apply to rezone. And if this becomes a zone, you know, and and a designation, then then it would be possible for them to do so. I would probably suggest that that, you know, they work with us through the review of our planning documents. A rezoning process can take almost a year. You know, the the review of the planning documents may take two years. So, I mean, we're having that discussion now with 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 other people around town. But, you know, I would suggest that they wait it out and work with us, you know, to create some some zoning and to to make some changes that best fits with with, you know, what we want to do and and what would they what they would want to do.
Are there any other questions before we motion or? Obviously, this is going to come back a number of times to council. So as as Nick clearly said, we're at the first step of quite a few steps. The next one being the public participation meeting on March 2. If there are no other questions, is someone prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, direct staff to continue work on the concurrent amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use by law to consider a highway commercial zone in the Bridgewater Business Park expansion as presented in this document 22-011, including holding a public participation meeting on March 2, 2022.
Thank you, seconded by
I'll second that.
Sir Conklin, thank you. We've had a pretty good discussion. I would encourage folks to sign up for that public participation meeting, virtual public participation meeting in a couple of weeks. Hearing no other questions, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Moving on, we have correspondence for information. We have a letter from the Town of Mahone Bay showing their support for Regional Anti-Racism and Anti-Discrimination Committee. So the five mayors and and warden for our region are working on a regional anti-racism committee terms of reference that will come back to all the councils. So, of course, Bridgewater has an anti-racism task force already in place. And they are very much supportive of a regional model. Obviously, racism doesn't know which county it's in. It's it's everywhere. Borders don't apply. So this is something very much that a regional approach will be beneficial. So that letter is there showing their support. And we have broad support across the across the region for this. The next, again, it's just correspondence for information. It's the public engagement for Nova Scotia Equity and Anti-Racism Legislation. And I know our CAO was part of a presentation today. I don't know if you just want to give a brief overview.
Sure. So the Office of Equity and Anti-Racism are looking at drafting proposed legislation that they're targeting would go to the spring setting. Seems fast, but that's kind of their goal and their target. And this legislation would put some responsibilities on to public bodies such as municipalities. The their PowerPoint presentation that's attached kind of shows where their where their focus areas are. And one of the things that they wanted to do was make municipalities aware of that. And in terms of government, what what they're basically looking to do is create requirements where where governments have to develop a strategy. And it could mean that municipalities have to develop a strategy that we would use that strategy in the development of policy and in the review of policy as well to put that lens on our review. And that's actually kind of in line with what has already been recommended by our anti-racism task force, that council take a review of their policy with that with the lens to anti-racism. And this this would kind of do the same thing. They also talk about developing standards that would create data metrics essentially that we would measure against and and targets to meet and a requirement to report on that as well. They're looking for feedback. They do recognize that even though the the goals and objectives are good, when you require municipality to do something that's not already within their within their wheelhouse, that that means that there's additional resources and and funding required. And they couldn't really answer the questions about where if would there be extra funding provided? But they would provide support. And they know that that question about funding will be out there. And so they're looking for some feedback. Some of the comments that were made during the session I attended today were that when we looked at accessibility, accessibility could be totally different goals. But with the accessibility, the legislation was came out the same municipalities, you must have an accessibility plan. You must meet standards, so similar type of theme. And what the province did was they they did get came up with a handbook or a guidebook that gave municipality tools and said, here's the steps. Here's what you need to do, and here's how you do that. So they identified that if you're going to do this in the same municipalities, you shall do this. Training is important. And it was acknowledged that perhaps, you know, when we're doing these reviews, some of us don't have the learned or lived experiences that others may have. So some training to be for awareness would be important. And then those toolkits and handbooks and guides that can help us as we go through that. And there is also comment about maybe a regional approach would be also something that should be looked at and encouraged if if appropriate, that just as as the mayor said, racism doesn't have boundaries. It doesn't care where the town line is. And similar thing with this is is that we would, they could look at encouraging municipalities to partner and develop regional approaches and strategies to that. So at this point, it's just on the agenda. There are there are some questions at the end that individuals are encouraged to give feedback on. And I guess it's really a matter of whether or not we want to develop that feedback as a council. Where councils happy to have individual counselors and staff provide feedback as they deem appropriate.
Yeah, so that's the really the big question for tonight. We don't even have to answer it today. We can think about it and bring it back to a future meeting. But would council rather each of you, where you feel appropriate, give your feedback? Or should we add this to a discussion session, put our feedback together into one piece and submit that as the Town of Bridgewater to the province? So again, we don't have to answer that question right now, but we should figure out how we want to address it. Tammy?
Just as a suggestion, council may also want to refer this to the Anti-Racism Task Force. There is a committee that does, I I believe they're probably looking at it anyway, but
They are.
Perhaps provide some advice and comment back to council that could help council formulate a response.
Yep, I know they're they're looking at it and they registered for one of the sessions. So there are members attending. So that, yes, of course, that's another option, too, is is either working with them or having their them submit feedback on our behalf as well. So perhaps we can, maybe the next, the best course of action is to add this to our discussion session. And we can, I guess, put our heads together and come up with a plan. Unless someone has a clear, I really want us to do it this way or that way. Okay, so why do we add this to agenda so it comes back and we can take next steps? Perfect. Any other questions on that one? Okay, we're down to correspondence for action, Town of Mahone Bay. Regional housing needs assessment for Ludenburg County. And I know that we had a bit of a discussion this afternoon about isn't the province already doing this? I don't know, Tammy, if you want to just speak to that.
Yeah, so so that this this issue was was something that came up at the mayor's, wardens and CAO's meeting. Mahone Bay was encouraging that the councils to consider looking at a regional housing needs assessment. It's something that our councils talked about and and our neighboring municipal units have as well. The response was that we think that we do believe that the province had indicated that they would take the lead in doing the regional housing needs assessments. So we did do a check in with municipal affairs staff to see if that in fact is the case and when we anticipate that. So our understanding is that they're working on a request proposals that would go out to have that work undertaken. So the key for for the municipal units would be to be able to see that scope of work in the public procurement. So we'd be able to see the scope of work to ensure that it is in fact a housing needs assessment that would meet the needs of the region in terms of what it's going to analyze and collect and how how deep it goes. So at this point, I did, I did make contact with the CAOs in Ludenburg County to let them know that that's what we found out and that it may be best to wait before we take any action to see in fact, what that scope of work will entail. Because it very well may do what we need it to do. And our work would be a duplicate of what's already being planned.
But we, do we know when they're going to issue that?
No, I don't have the exact date. My understanding is is that they were working on that.
I think the only date I remember seeing for sure was that they hoped to have a report by the end of this calendar year. So, okay, Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yeah, the the deputy minister told us NSFM board last week, I believe it was, or two weeks ago, that the RFP was due out in March and and with all of the data and the report finalized by December, so.
Okay, I mean, it it doesn't make sense to re to redo the same work. But I I probably share the same concerns as everyone on council. Is a provincial wide needs assessment going to give us in Ludenburg County, in the Town of Bridgewater, the information that we really need? Because it's not, it's not apples to apples from Halifax to Bridgewater or Yarmouth to to Sydney. So I would hope they would break that up into this region, that region. Deputy Mayor?
So maybe suggestion would be that we, as council, or maybe even regionally, as part of our response back to Mahone Bay, write to the Department of Municipal Affairs requesting that we perhaps get it a week before it's released to review it and just provide some quick feedback. If there's if there's data in there that we want that we're not seeing and but I certainly would suggest we wait at least until we get a look at that RFP before we commit to a regional study that might be doing the exact same thing.
Deputy, sorry, Council Thorburn.
Yeah, Shaq, Social Action Housing Association. I'm I'm sure they should be involved somewhere as they're Stacy is is are they involved in that assessment at all? Because we done the first one in Shaq in 2012. But I think it was kind of waiting for the new census to come out so that they could have more accurate information before they done the study. I don't know if that's correct or not.
I know Shaq isn't directly involved, except except to be interested in the the regional study. So I guess, I guess I would agree, we just need to wait to look at the RFP and then go from there. If it's if it's not going to deliver what we need, then I would support the a separate regional assessment.
Yeah, I think I think our best course of action is is probably as a as regional municipalities to, as Deputy Mayor said, reach out to the province and say, we'd like to see that as soon as we can so that we know we can give some feedback. So if it's not going to give us the data we need, maybe there's an opportunity for municipalities to just give a little bit of a, you know, if you change this or change that, it'll give us what we need. And if it doesn't, then we have to have a conversation regionally. Are we prepared to go out on our own as a region and fund it? Does that make sense to everybody? So I don't, I don't think we need to respond to Mahone Bay because they're looking for indicating support for regional housing needs assessment in Ludenburg County. So we're not quite there yet. We we maybe need to respond if that provincial one is not good up to up to par. So I don't know if we need to take action on this item tonight. Deputy Mayor?
Well, my suggestion would be to to write, respond to the correspondence, just you know, saying that we certainly support this, but we're waiting, or we as a region should wait until we see what the province is is going to do for for an RFP and what that includes and, yeah.
So perhaps, perhaps the the action tonight then is similar to what Mahone Bay did, is a is a letter to their other municipalities requesting that we all sign a letter of support for the provincial study request, but also requesting that we get to see it and provide feedback before before it is approved.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, perfect. Seconded by Council Thorburn. Mrs. Porter Low, did you catch that that brilliantly worded? And lengthy?
Thank you, I got the essence of it.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Took forever to prepare that. Are there any further questions on that? Hearing done, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing done, motion is carried, thank you. We're down to reports and recommendations, and our physical activity strategy has returned to council. And I see Sir Lindsay is here to walk us through that.
Hello, everyone. I'll just share my screen here. Should do it. All right, so this is the physical activity strategy. The purpose of this strategy is simply to increase physical activity in Bridgewater. And this is a purpose that is derived from the province of Nova Scotia's municipal physical activity leadership program, the MPAL program. And this program seeks to increase physical activity and movement and to address secondary time to contribute to social, economic, environmental, health benefits among residents. The mission of this strategy is largely to facilitate opportunities for physical activity in Bridgewater and to support and encourage residents in accessing those opportunities. And we also intend to support residents by continuing to implement and promote existing town policies and plans, such as the active transportation plan, open space plan, and accessibility action plan. And then the goals, their five main goals of this strategy are, one, to increase access and reduce barriers to the activity for all ages, to increase the number of people who regularly use active transportation, to connect people with nature through outdoor recreation and unstructured play, create physical and physical activity opportunities that are inclusive and diverse, and then foster physical activity and recreational leadership in Bridgewater, looking at kind of building capacity. In developing this strategy, we worked with a number of engager processes. So the first one is the physical activity community survey. This was conducted as part of the program by the province. It was a telephone survey conducted in 2020. And it kind of was the meets of our engagements. We also polled from the REC 2.0 online survey, the Open Space Plan Engagement Outcomes Report that was conducted in 2017, and then the Active Transportation Plan, which was recently done in 2019. And so the kind of all these coalesced together to give us kind of a big picture of recreation opportunities in Bridgewater. And then here's some of the results from that telephone survey I just wanted to draw attention to. So if we're looking at kind of some of the top barriers of being more physically active reported by people, the three main ones were a social aspect of having someone to go with them, difficulty incorporating physical activity into their daily routine, and then prevailing health issues. And then people were also interested in participating more frequently in things like walking, swimming, bicycling, and canoeing or kayaking. So looking at both of these, kind of looking at ways to bring this together, to deal with those barriers and to kind of re emphasize things like walking and cycling in our community. And then here's just a big summary of all those results throughout the other processes. So kind of looking at that REC 2.0 survey, eighty-three percent of our respondents wanted more free unstructured programming. Timing is one of their largest barriers, coming back to that time issue. Open Space Engagement Outcomes Report. So respondents, you typically use our open spaces to enjoy nature, socialize and exercise. And then within the Active Transportation Plan pointed out some areas that lack space for walking, wheeling and cycling, because like some sidewalk connectivity and bicycle parking. And then from building off of those results and kind of kind of taking a bit of analysis, we identified some gaps and opportunities. And then from building off of those results and kind of kind of taking a bit of analysis, we identified some gaps and opportunities. So that kind of that time piece comes up again. An opportunity being the caregiver inclusive programming, trialing new times and schedules, communications, so looking at more robust social media and print engagement. We also unveiled Rec, so kind of looking at more robust communication and engagement through that platform. Cost, so trial programs in existence and kind of continuing that. An expanded equipment loan program is also an opportunity. Additional subsidies and financial support, and then begun of ongoing promotion of self-directed activity, building that capacity so that you can go out and do it on your own. Then looking also at a gap of town infrastructure, so improving active transportation infrastructure and connecting to opportunities and just being able to get out and walk more readily. And then the social aspects, an opportunity being more non competitive programming, women's only groups, and organized physical activity groups to kind of build that social bond between people being physically active. And so that all that comes together into our action plan. And so a larger component of the strategy outlines over, or sorry, this is overall action goals, objectives, and the specific actions to achieve the objectives. And so I'm just going to go through those goals and objectives, but I do have slides for the actions themselves at the end of the strategy. So goal number one was that increasing access and reducing barriers piece for all ages. The three objectives here are increased child and youth physical literacy, to eliminate the physical, social, mental, and financial barriers to being physically active for all ages, and reducing social isolation and loneliness among seniors through opportunities for group physical activity. And then the next objective four, five, and six, and seven for this are increasing the percentage of girls aged twelve to eight that are physically active and building confidence for lifelong participation to reduce drop off in physical activity rates, making it easier for young people to try new activities and sports, better accommodating parents with young children, and helping women fit physical activity into their busy schedules. Goal number two, increasing the number of people who regularly use A T. So we're looking at goals that largely come out of the A T plan. So looking at expanding, enhancing the active transportation network, adopting policies to support active transportation, and promoting and encouraging active transportation through partnerships, programming, and marketing events. Goal number three, similar to the A T plan, this focuses on nature through outdoor recreation and structured play. And so in this, we're looking at kind of actions and objectives originating from the open space plan. So we're looking at providing more outdoor focused program opportunities and improving the quality of existing open spaces and and planning for their improved growth and connectivity. We're kind of creating the space for people to be physically active in. Goal number four is creating physical activity opportunities that are inclusive and diverse. So we're looking at to design parks and open spaces with inclusivity in mind. We're looking to support newcomers and accessing opportunities. We want to increase the awareness of the benefits of physical activity for people with disabilities and chronic illnesses. We'd like to reduce physical activity barriers to being physically active, and we'd like to promote L G B T Q plus two inclusivity and programming. And then last goal five, kind of the capacity piece, so fostering physical activity and recreational leadership in Bridgewater. We'd like to identify, recruit, and train physical activity leaders and increase female leadership. So then implementation, the municipal physical activity leaders will be responsible for supporting the implementation of these actions over the next five years. There are there are fifty goals across five goal areas. This is a high number, however, the intent would include actions that are broad in order to complete them without requiring much more additional staff time. Some of the actions include the continuation of existing work, others focus on the exploration of opportunities, and then others do require staff time that is outside of current work. There is no specific time rate timeframe for the actions, but all the actions are considered timely and important. And then financially, these actions can be supported through current budget, the action items that are continuing or being expanded upon. And then for actions requiring additional work and resources, there are grants that exist, including the Active Communities Fund from the Department of Communities, Culture, Tourism, Heritage that is specifically focused on M P L work. And then lastly, just touching on the evaluation side of things. So the evaluation is largely focused on the number of actions that are implemented and maintained. Additionally, there would be an aim to have increased recreation program enrollment, increased equipment loan program usage, and improved quality of experience retention of physical activity outcomes. Question staff would ask for value and success would also include what diverse and inclusive opportunities are being offered and what difficulties that are being implemented in the actions. That's everything? No, no other questions?
Great, thank you. Questions from members of council? And we had a really good session last last week, alright, time wise. Like this great presentation here, thank you. I don't know if we have additional questions because we brought those all last week. This this will be posted on the website, I'm assuming, for the public to to see. I think it's great. We know that being more active actually reduces costs in other areas like healthcare, improves mental health, things like that, so. It's a really important strategy. If there are no questions, is someone prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald was, I saw her hand first.
Oh, I'm just going to move my my screen here. I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse and approve the physical activity strategy as presented in document twenty-two dash zero zero eight.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Caldwell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing done, motion is carried. It's passed. Great, thanks for staff for their work on that. Our next item nine point two, Town Master Infrastructure Plan Phase Three Engineering Services Award. Mr. Davidson's here to join us. Looking right at the screen this time, that's awesome.
Actually brought to you by the Public Works Garage. Just we're in the midst of snow removal operations, so I wanted to stick around here for that. So that's where I'm presenting from tonight. So here tonight to give you an update on the master master plan phase three as that's part of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. It has a project budget of about eighty thousand dollars. The area focus for the project commonly referred to as the East Boosted Zone bounded by Aberdeen north and the town lines and either in either either other corner. A bit of a reminder of just where how we got to today, I guess, is a few years ago, we had budgeted to complete a town master infrastructure plan in four phases in the town. We completed phase one and two, Glen Allen area and the business park last eight last summer with phase three for this year and phase four for next year. And that's phase four is for the southwestern corner of the town. Each each part of the master plan really has the same scope of work to focus on the infrastructure, sewer, roads, water, storm, sanitary, et cetera, where we consider our number of planning documents, the M P S, L U B subdivision, our open space plan, transportation, active transportation, really all to examine the effects of growth on the areas and to see where we might have deficiencies in our infrastructure and what are the possible solutions in order to really help guide a conceptual lot layout to help developers make sure that services are installed appropriately and to resolve any future future conflicts or or take advantage of any missed opportunities. So that's really the 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 scope of the work. We did issue an RFP in December. It was closed in January. We did have a voluntary pre submission meeting where we had more than one consultant attend. Unfortunately, we only received one submission. That submission was reviewed by committee of staff per the evaluation criteria. Of course, they scored the highest since there only being one. Then the the highest design points scored the with with the single submission scored the highest. They fortunately enough, they did complete phase one and two of the master plan itself, which is good news. The financial implications with respect to this project is there was an eighty thousand dollar budget for the project that was increased from forty to allocate funds to completing a sanitary detailed sanitary sewer analysis for the project area. And at this point, subject to award, we would think we would be about twenty-six thousand dollars under budget. Staff are recommending the use of the remaining budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two funds to explore and update the phase two of the master plan as it relates to an earlier discussion around rezoning some of the areas, the lands adjacent to one oh three. Back to Council Thor, one of Council Thorburn's requests before just where we are to date overall with the project. So subject to this award, we've spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the master plan projects so far, with twenty-six of that being committed to provisional items for a total of about just about under a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to date. With the options presented, really, the phase phase three is under budget. But council can elect not to award the provisional item. Some caution towards that because there this could, without this analysis, it could limit the limit limit development or increase costs with unplanned infrastructure upgrades. So staff recommends that Council for the town of Bridgewater award the engineering services for the development of the match or infrastructure, town master infrastructure plan phase three, RFP twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, including the provisional item to Design Point Engineering and Surveying Limited for a total price of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eight seventy-eight dollars plus H S T or fifty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents net. And number two, direct staff to utilize the remaining budget budget funds, but not to exceed the overall project budget of eighty thousand dollars to update phase two of the master plan business park based upon the proposed rezoning discussed earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council? Is it RFP twenty twenty-two sixteen? Let's get them. Or is it really RFP twenty twenty-one sixteen? Because it was in twenty twenty-one and it just so happens that the document is twenty-two sixteen. It's just that coincidence?
I think it's that coincidence.
Wow.
Coincidence.
Must be. You guys really are engineers. Had to engineer that together. Yeah, sorry. So questions, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Phase three. If there are no questions, is someone prepared to make the motion to award the tender? Council Presrier.
Yes, Your Worship. I'll make a motion that Council for the town of Bridgewater award RFP twenty twenty-one dash sixteen engineering services for the development of Town Master Infrastructure Plan Phase Three, including the provincial item to Design Point Engineering and Surveying Limited for a total price of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars plus H S T, which is fifty-three thousand nine eighty-six seventy-eight net H S T, and further direct staff to utilize the remaining budget funds to update the phase two master plan. Business park based on revised zoning, not to exceed the overall budget prod budget overall project budget of eighty thousand net H S T.
Thank you. And to have a second or Deputy Mayor Tanner, thank you for the discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing done, motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
And good job with the plowing and everyone stay safe. Our next item nine point three is the preapproval of purchase of police car. I don't know if our there's our chief. Do you do you wish to walk us through this one, Chief Fenner?
Sure, just
It's a little bit different than our normal purchase or police car.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. How's how's everybody doing on this lovely storm night? Just the during capital budget discussions earlier in the fall, the commission decided to to replace two of the marked vehicles or add an additional marked vehicle, that being electric. We did have a commission meeting last week and part of the commission operating budget was an increase of a a full-time traffic member to focus on road safety and traffic issues throughout the town as as we grow and grow. So as part of the commission, they voted in favor of opting for an electrical vehicle and we did our research and we're looking for a specific type of vehicle. Unfortunately, for police work, there are only really two types of vehicles that have the equipment prefabbed for these vehicles. One being the Tesla and the other one would be a full-size Ford truck which has just come on or is about to come online with electric vehicle. They are delayed. So we are asking for preapproval for the purchase of a specific vehicle, a Tesla three all-wheel drive extended version to give us the the battery life, et cetera, for for a shift within town. I think our goal is to use it for the traffic position Monday to Friday during the days and then park it, charge it, and then it would be used for part of the night shift to to evaluate the go-forward basis on policing policing vehicles. So that's basically what we're looking for. We did reach out. I did reach out to the to the agent for the Atlantic provinces and and did obtain a quote. As you can see in the report, it is for sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars plus tax or net cost of seventy-two thousand two hundred and seven dollars. So that's basically what we're seeking. Preapproval and sole sourcing of this vehicle to meet our needs. Like I said, it is one of the only electric vehicles with that distance and the ability to get silent patrol minute stuff for inside the vehicle.
That's great. And I know I know the first question we're going to get from people is, you know, the car is is more expensive than a normal gasoline-powered car, but our our research has shown that other police departments are saving around five thousand dollars a year. And the life of the car is extended. And so it's it's over the course of its life, it actually costs less than the gasoline car.
Yeah, that that's correct. Our our basic rule of thumb is rotation of our gas vehicles. They do run almost twenty-four seven every three years with mileage and runtime on the engines. We're expecting no less than five years with with an electric one and maintenance costs are are definitely less than, other than a set of winter tires, there should be no additional maintenance costs.
Great. Tammy, put your hand up, but then down, did you?
Yeah, no. I just later on in in our in our agenda, we have a report on capital preapprovals. So in there, we're actually asking for preapproval for both vehicles as opposed to just the one with alternative procurement for the electric vehicle.
So this motion is just to deal with the alternative procurement, then the approval of the purchases in the next the next item or couple items down.
Yeah, I I would say that, I mean, you can do it. You're just going to see it again and a report on the agenda under capital preapprovals.
Okay, yeah, so this one is just related to deal with the the alternative procurement.
And well, I think the motion had preapproval in it too.
Oh, yes, you're right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Council Thorburn.
Just a couple of comments, and I'd read in some ways, those battery lives of those electric vehicles, is do I understand them Scotty to be ten years?
Yeah, so we we did meet with a local, a number of local owners of the Tesla just to get our our information straight. It's new new to us and not having a dealer that we could reach out to locally. So we did meet with a couple of owners and, you know, other than a yearly break maintenance and mostly because they seize up, so it's just basically making sure they're free, but they're they're recommending they lose a percentage of battery life per per year. Unfortunately for police, it's it's unsure. We have did our research and we're actually purchasing a or a donation of a new light bar that is also solar to help reduce the the battery consumption. So they're they're saying five years easy with a set of batteries without any replacement. Is basically the owners are telling us, but it is it is a new adventure for us. You know, in this, in these times.
And I guess my my supplementary question, the color of that new vehicle would be black, same as the rest of our fleet, not a different color?
Correct, yeah, it will be black and just it may be dressed up a little more as it is going to be used for traffic enforcement and the invisible round town. Once again, it it won't be setting idling, obviously, if we're running radar, et cetera, like currently our cars are always running. So this will be setting and there'll be no 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 off missions.
Yeah, great, thank you.
No, it doesn't to be, I mean, by twenty thirty-five, they all have to be electric. That's that's the federal rule on vehicles, so we're in an early step. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, is someone prepared to make sure you refresh your e-scribe, please, as the motion's been updated and is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Council Caldwell.
Let's do one more refresh.
Always wise to do the extra refresh.
Yeah. I move that council give pre-budget approval for the
Yeah. I move that council give pre-budget approval for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three capital budget item of two. Is the procurement of a marked electric police vehicle through alternative procurement as provided for in section eighteen F of policy seventy-nine, purchasing and tendering.
Thank you. Do I have a second or?
A second.
Second, if I, Deputy Mayor Tanner, uh, further discussion?
Question.
Of course, being called, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. And then obviously we're going to have the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three capital pre-approvals. Uh, as well later on the agenda. Uh, thank you, Chief Finner.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Right. Uh, nine point four economic development strategy. Uh, we've, uh, had great conversations about, uh, this. And so, uh, welcome to Mr. Brown, who is our uh, economic development guru, who will walk us through this one. No pressure though.
No pressure, no. Thanks. Hi, good evening, everybody. Shall I bring it up on the screen?
Yep.
Hey, just give me a second here. Let's hope I can do that. Uh, let's see. How about that? Do you have that now?
Not yet. So it's the, it's the up arrow next to the red leave button. You'll see a, a box with a arrow pointing up. Click that.
Okay, it's just a question of finding the right window. I've got somebody open. Here we go. I think so. How's that?
There we go. You got it.
Okay. So, uh, I guess in interest of time, I won't go into all of the gory details. We, as we've done a fairly deep dive earlier, uh, on the, on the draft document, but I thought maybe we could, we could review the strategic directions and the major priority goals of the plan and, uh, and, uh, and refrain from getting into all the individual objectives because there's quite a few. Uh, so basically the plan, the, the plan is structured, uh, in four, across four strategic directions. Just going to walk down through to our first one, starting with, uh, a strategic direction of, of growing Bridgewater. So, uh, we've established four priority goals. Under this, uh, particular strategic, uh, area or theme, uh, firstly being the business parks expansion. Uh, the second being business growth and attraction. Uh, and the third thing, a third item under, under that theme being selling Bridgewater, marketing Bridgewater for, uh, for development and for growth, uh, residential and population growth. And finally, uh, development of an attainable housing plan. So the second, uh, that, that's our first, uh, our initial theme. The second strategic theme is, uh, developing a green economy and we've established two goals there. The first being the development of a green charter. And the second being the, uh, uh, full, a full implementation of the energized Bridgewater initiative and the potential economic development impacts, uh, that come with that. Uh, so from there, we, uh, the third, the third basic, uh, strategic theme or direction is building an inclusive and diverse, uh, community. And we've established two priority goals there. Firstly, one being, uh, building a welcoming community. Uh, and the second being, uh, growing our population. And of course, there's, there's a series of different objectives related to each of, each of those. Uh, the final strategic, uh, direction of the plan involves, uh, develop it, further developing our infrastructure and other assets, uh, to, to, to assist in, in further growth and development. Uh, and we've established essentially four, four, four to six goals there. The first being, uh, focusing on our wastewater capacity and addressing some of the issues that we need to resolve there, both, uh, with our, our, um, our wastewater capacity as well as the, the master plan that's recently been developed, uh, uh, for the growth areas in the community. Uh, the second, uh, strategic, uh, goal or priority is our transportation improvements. Uh, and this is, this ranges from, uh, things like the intersection and traffic study, uh, through to a feasibility study on the expansion of the transit system and, uh, more, uh, a further implementation of the, uh, of the active trans, uh, transportation, uh, strategy. Uh, a third, a third strategic priority under infrastructure is further development and enhancement of the La Havre River as a, as a centerpiece of Bridgewater and that both involves waterfront development as well as, as, uh, focusing on future land acquisition and assembly in terms of, uh, addressing flood mitigation and environmental protection. And the final major, major, uh, goal, uh, under, under this, uh, direction would be, uh, uh, the implementation of the recently completed, uh, open space plan. Now that, that basically rounds out the major, the major priority areas. Each, each priority, we've established a series of of objectives underneath, uh, which form our work plan for this in future years and certainly the full finished document will be, uh, will be placed on the, on the website for, for the broader public to see as well. So, uh, I don't think I'll get into all of the elements of the work plan. It's fairly meant to be and, and it was covered, we covered in, in, in pretty good detail last week. So. But out with that, I could take any questions that you might have.
Uh, yes, counsel, do, uh, are there any questions, comments? I find it a very, that, that, like a really good plan. Like it, it looks good. It presents well. It actually has. So I was waiting for Counsel Thorburn to say it, but he hasn't said in last couple of meetings. We don't want another plan that sits on a shelf.
No.
Uh, and, and does nothing. Um. Certainly that's what Counsel McGinnis would say if he was still on council. Um, he's probably watching at home on, on, online saying, I better not sit on the shelf. So I, I, I feel like there's achievable targets. Um, so that I'm really pleased with that.
Certainly.
Uh, I'll open the floor up to members of council for any additional comments. No, we're all good. Is someone prepared to make a motion to approve the inclusive economic, uh, growth plan? Counsel Callwell.
Okay. I have to get out my hand early, I guess, to.
Yeah, you gotta.
Promotion. I know. Uh, I move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve the inclusive economic growth plan for the town of Bridgewater as presented in document twenty-two dash zero zero nine.
Great, thank you. Second and bye.
I'll second.
Counsel for here. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Excellent. Now the work begins.
Certainly.
Uh, and we have purchase and sale agreement for lot, uh, one oh one, uh, dash six Glen Allen Drive. And is that, uh, you again, Mr. Brown?
Yes, yes. So basically we, we've had, uh, in, in your, uh, request for direction or for decision. Uh, we've had a request to purchase some land in the, uh, Glen Allen subdivision, uh, and I've put forward a recommendation, uh, to council that the, uh, offer of sixty thousand dollars be, uh, accepted and, and you authorize staff to execute, uh, an agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement with, uh, with Mr. Don Bondi and, and Mr. Adam Wynott for, for said property.
Quite straightforward. Uh, any questions on this item from council? Hearing none, is someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that council accept the sixty thousand dollar offer and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale and buyback agreement from Donald Bondi and Adam Wynott for lot one oh one dash six. Glen Allen Drive with buyback agreement terms to require commencement of construction within twelve months from date of purchase and completion of both housing units within twenty-four months of closing date of purchase.
Thank you. Second and bye. Counsel Cocklin. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is capital carry forward from twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget items and I see our director of finance is here.
Good evening.
Good evening, in the dark. There we are.
Um, so I have, um, a couple of things to go through. I guess there's two separate reports. So we'll go through the pre-approvals. Um, or sorry, the carry forward list first. Um, this carry forward list looks like a large total. It's nine point eight million dollars. So I wanted to address that first. And the reason for that is we have some pretty significant, um, multi-year projects on this list, one of them being exit twelve A. Um, so because that initially was, um, scheduled to be repaid or paid to the province over, um, a three or four-year period, it, it is going to carry forward. And, uh, and part of the reason for that is we actually restructured our payment plan with them during the year. So, um, that's changed a bit of the numbers there as well. And there's one other large project, which is the pump station eleven, um, design and construction, which was approved by council earlier this year, um, to award, um, part of, um, phase, I guess, phase one and phase two of that. So, um, we're having a carry forward, but then we'll have the pre-approval in the next report. So it's a seven million dollar project. However, um, the amount that was, um, approved for twenty-one, twenty-two needs to carry forward, um, as well. In addition to that, there's a few other projects, um, just either not quite complete or ones that didn't get started, such as the water tower. Um, and we are working with other, um, organizations for that one. So we're, we're working our way through some of these projects, but they're not complete. Um, I'm just gonna see if I can share my screen quickly because I know the report that you have is, it's scanned and it's not quite as, uh, clear the things that are highlighted. So you'll see on my screen, hopefully. Got other things popping up here on my screen. Are that things highlighted in green that I wanted to bring to your attention? So, um, the Brook Street Sewer, um, project was originally budgeted for two hundred and forty-five thousand. Um, they are estimating it's going to come in at about two hundred and thirty-five thousand. So saving us a little bit of money. Um, in addition, I've repurposed some of the funding from other projects. So if you're looking at the actual twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget, I've highlighted the things that I've, um, requested changes on. Um, there is a bit of an explanation there for that as well. The same thing with exit twelve A, the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two was actually three point two million. However, due to, um, the new contract, um, that's been negotiated with the province that council saw, I think, uh, last month. Um, that carry forward amounts being revised to two point four and you'll actually see the, um, the new amounts for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four in the capital budget. That will total still the eight point four million dollar commitment that we had. Um, the flare stack replacement is, um, a project that was not originally on the twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget. And we've, um, brought that item as an emergency project to council, um, throughout the year. So that project was approved for two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to be funded from the wastewater reserve. Um, the next one to note would be pump station three. And pump station three, um, was originally just, um, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget for, um, piping replacement. But it was determined that we needed, or it was better to replace pump station three. So that hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget was repurposed to the engineering design work for pump station three. And, um, council had approved that earlier in the year for two hundred and seven thousand. So the one hundred and eighty thousand from pump station three was repurposed. As well as the remaining balance of twenty-seven thousand being funded from the wastewater reserve. Um, the radio tower replacement was budgeted for two hundred and ninety-five thousand. The budget's actually been revised. Um, the project's almost complete, but not quite there. Um, the revised budget for that is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And, um, pump station eleven, the only change, um, made to that one, other than carrying forward the balance, uh, was to change the funding. Um, in last year's budget, we had estimated to use some gas tax, um, funding for that. However, we can't stack that with the other grants we've received for that project. Um, so we've had to replace that with debt, um, but I've moved some other debt out of a project and, and funded that. Um, so we'll have that gas tax available for other projects. So that, um, gives you here the nine point eight million dollars of total projects to be carried forward. Are there any questions related to those?
Questions from members of council? Kind of used to capital carry forward, but I, I appreciate the explanation, um, because I saw the number and I thought, oh boy, but.
Yeah, there's some, some multi-year projects for sure that, uh, that stand out in this one.
Yeah. Uh, Counsel Thorburn.
Uh, yeah, Cam, I guess if, if we haven't spent that money and it's been free and was proved, uh, approved, then probably we didn't have to borrow the money either. So we're probably saving some money there. It's not spent, not borrowed yet, right?
Yes, we're deferring our, any that are being funded with debt. We've definitely put that borrowing off, um, until that project's complete. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, thanks for raising that. That's a good question. I have new information too. Other comments?
Questions?
Hearing none, is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel for here.
Yes. Make a motion that council for the town of Bridgewater approve the carry forward of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two capital projects budgets to the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three as outlined in document twenty dash zero nineteen with an estimated total of nine million eight hundred and thirty-three thousand and nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Thank you. Second and bye. Deputy Mayor Tanner's hand first. Everyone hands up.
Just a note on the document title, twenty-two?
Yeah, it should be. So it should be documented, uh, twenty-two dash nineteen.
Okay.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. And our next item is the twenty-two, twenty-three capital pre-approvals.
Yes, so the pre-approvals list, um, is also, uh, a large amount. And so five, just over five point seven million dollars. Those projects include the solar PV studying design. The reason that's on the, um, pre-approvals list is we've actually have confirmation of the hundred thousand dollar budget. We have grant funding for ninety thousand dollars of that project. So, um, with only ten thousand being funded, um, by the town of Bridgewater through either our own funding or in-kind services. So, um, that one's significant to get started. Um, other ones that you may be familiar with would be the King Street culvert replacement, which, uh, came in significantly, um, over budget when tendered during the fiscal year. So that one's being put on the, um, pre-approval list in hopes that it can get out earlier, um, and perhaps get some better pricing. The police department vehicle was previously discussed, um, this evening. As well, I've mentioned pump station eleven in the carry forward, but this is the remaining balance of that pump station eleven. Um, council had, when the, uh, tender was awarded, approved, um, both parts of this project, however, um, or the award of two pieces. However, there is an extra seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, um, over and above that original, um, report that went to council that also um, would need pre-approval. So that brings that project total to, um, just over seven point eight million dollars. Um, some of it was in the carry forward, some of it is on this list. Um, and then a couple of wastewater projects there as well. Um, and again, just trying to get ahead, knowing it's difficult for our suppliers, um, to obtain um, some of the products that we need, um, and to get these, the tenders out early for both pricing and availability reasons.
Questions on any of those? Uh, Deputy Mayor Tanner was first.
Uh, I'm just curious if staff had any hesitations or concerns about the, uh, solar study moving forward, given Nova Scotia Power's recent attempt at, uh, at, uh, perhaps charging for, uh, for that power that was generated. I don't want to, I don't want to spend a lot of money if, if a year from now somehow they, uh, they take that to you, the UARB and.
So at least the province that's introducing legislation to prevent that. I would have been concerned had they not, had they just gone with that delay that Nova Scotia Power had mentioned, but with the province announcing that they're actively going to draft reg legislation to prevent. But with the province announcing that they're actively going to draft legislation to prevent what they had proposed from happening, it's kind of. Yeah. You'd be right on the money with that concern though, if they hadn't done that.
The other thing is, is that we do have significant funding for it, so our cost is ten thousand. And that's really miles, it's time. So it's in kind.
I just want to know if, when the public reads the document, that total beside police vehicle is for two vehicles. I had a bit of a, oh, that's a lot for one. No, it's for two. Counselor Thorburn.
That was my question, Your Worship. Should say in that document that it's for two vehicles?
Yeah.
The one forty-three thousand. Thanks.
It does. Actually, it says two marked patrol vehicles, one gas, one electric vehicle in the project description column. It doesn't say that in the document or in the body of the report.
It's his vehicle.
But if you scroll a little bit towards the end of the report, there is a chart there that indicates how things were being funded, but it also does indicate that that's two vehicles.
Other questions or comments? I'm hoping that we get, like when we go to tender or RFP, I hope we start to get more bidders. I am getting really frustrated with the no bidder, one bidder for projects that are, they're good, solid projects. It's not, you know, one stop sign. These are big projects. Hopeful. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Thorburn.
I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and preapprove the capital projects in the amount of five million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred dollars as outlined in document twenty-two dash zero two zero.
Thank you. Seconded by. Counselor Caldwell. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. And now we're on to nine point eight, which is twenty-two, twenty-three Remo operating budget. I don't know if. If staff is going to. Do you have some walking through it? Yep.
Just rotating and then the screen right now.
Okay.
So I can see it. Yeah, so I don't believe there is much of a significant change to the budget from last year. And yeah, it's. I think salaries are up a little bit, but that's, you know, normalized per their, as per their CPI range increases. So everything, everything's pretty much as last year for the most part. Any changes noted in the far right? And basically our contribution, which is based on uniform assessment. And so this would be our share of the regional emergency management coordinator and the ground search and rescue grant, the webpage, and both those pieces of Remo that we share with the District of Londonburg, Chester, Town of Mahombe and the Town of Londonburg. Our share of that is twelve point four four percent. And that means that this year's contribution is eighteen thousand, two hundred and ten. So it's up just slightly based on our share of the uniform assessment from sixteen thousand last year. So an increase of one thousand, three hundred and ninety.
Great. Thank you. This is a really important organization. And I know people, we're relying on them more and more as we see more severe weather events and other activities. So very good coordinator. Very, very good. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Caldwell.
Move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve the regional emergency management advisory committees two thousand, twenty-two, twenty-three budget totaling one hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars as contained in document twenty-two dash zero one three.
Thank you. Seconded by.
Well, seconded.
Deputy Mayor Tanner. Tell we're getting towards the end of the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. One day we'll be back in person and we can just raise hands and not have to mute and unmute. Our next item is strategic priorities update for the third quarter. Turn it over to the CIO.
Okay, so this summarizes the, an update on the priorities up to the end of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So that's the end of quarter three. And these are based on the priorities that council would have developed last year in January, February of twenty twenty-one. I'll just highlight the priorities back up to this reporter, all the department reports with all the activities of the departments over the last quarter as well. And certainly we have staff here if you have any questions about those. So under the wastewater strategy, our big activity there was the disaster mitigation adaptation fund application. It was the federal fund for our wastewater initiatives. It took a lot of staff time and resources. So Alison, Larry, Audrey all worked on that and Kim as well. And we got that completed, it's submitted, and we're anticipating we may hear in March of this year. And on that same vein, we are exploring the Invest in Canada infrastructure plan as well as the backup in the event that we don't get this. The sewer rate transition report will be coming to you in quarter four. Staff had been working on it, but you haven't seen anything. It'll come then. The wastewater strategy planning policy, we targeted quarter three for that. And you'll see when we go into our workshop on priorities for the upcoming fiscal year, we have some recommendations on the timing of that one since we're starting our plan review. The exit twelve A business park master plan and market analysis, we had a number of steps in there. The first step after our workshop with council was to look at change to the zoning to ensure that the zoning would allow for growth in the way that council envisioned it to occur. And Nick presented on that tonight. So staff have been working on that. And the appraisal work and the strategy will come next once we confirm the land uses. Economic development strategy during quarter three, there was a lot of work done there with our consultants and staff. So we did some stakeholder engagement and research. We had an online survey and we made, consultants made some direct contact. Council had a workshop to kind of review the findings of that, some of the research, the consultant did, the market analysis, all that stuff. And from that came the strategy that Greg presented to you tonight. So that one would be complete now that council's approved it and we're on to the implementation piece. The open space plan, we presented that to council. That was targeted for quarter three. We actually finished it in quarter three on that. So that's complete. I energized Bridgewater. Council and staff had suggested to council that we may need to look at a re-scope to narrow down the measurables that we're going to measure. Because we had a wide number of them and realized that we maybe were, be too busy trying to measure things as opposed to implementing the program. So we focused on the key areas, the ones that were important. We re-sculpted that last quarter and had the contribution agreement revised and executed. So we were able to push that out a year and have it re-sculpted. In terms of energized Bridgewater, there's a more detailed report for council attached to this plan. But you can see that we entered into the coordinated access system contract with SOTA. And so we're hopefully going to see that start it very soon. We did an investment system RFP. The housing energy management system concept document was delivered in quarter three. And there was a community energy systems report that came to council as well with respects to what we could do there. Alternative revenue sources, there were no direct outputs from that. And we had quarter four targeted for that. Asset management. So we made our funding application in, anyway, the fourth quarter of twenty twenty, the end of last fiscal year. And we heard back from them throughout the process that we were application number three hundred and some eighty. And so we heard back from them and said we passed their first round of reviews and we should hear in another six weeks. So we'll see. So anyway, we haven't, we haven't really started too much work. They're hoping to get the funding to help offset our costs. We do have sixty-five thousand dollars in the budget and council carried that forward. So we're hoping it aligns and we'll get that funding. But it's quite the chase to get that. But our next step in that, we did do some work. We are in a mentoring program with other municipalities and in the province. The committee's been revised or meeting. And we're in the process of doing the terms of reference for the committee and setting out our next steps. The tax rate debt strategy, we completed that. Kim brought forward the tax rate strategy as an annual discussion. We really started that last year. And that's kind of the lens council puts on the development budgets. And Kim brought forth some financial policies. There was debt, reserve and investment policies that were drafted and had legal review and presented in the last quarter. The accessibility plan really during the last quarter, our coordinator's been meeting with the management team to look at the development of a work plan. And with the bid, we kind of put it on hold in the last quarter, waiting for our economic development officer position to be filled. It now is with Greg and we'll be reviewing those steps there. And then affordable housing, we really had a report that came to council that identified the next steps in terms of what roles we can play with land use planning, waiving of fees and a grant program. So council's given some direction on that. And we just discussed tonight the affordable housing needs assessment. And we'll be writing the province along with the other municipal units to ensure we're able to review that scope of work before they do their work. And then transit to Osprey Village, which is the last. So we were targeting having a draft complete in the third quarter. I believe it was the fourth quarter that staff kind of got their eyes on that, which is just a month ago perhaps. And we anticipate that before the end of the fiscal year, there'll be a presentation to council on the findings of that. So council met in January of twenty twenty-two and had a virtual strategic priority setting exercise to look at the priorities for the upcoming year. So normally what you would see with this report is a revised chart that shows, okay, now we've completed these. These are the things in your next list that we're going to move up to now priorities. But because we're in the midst of developing and reviewing that whole piece and confirming and adding new initiatives to it, that chart's not there. We'll finalize that hopefully Wednesday night when council meets to have their second workshop and look at the priorities that they, that you indicated you were interested in pursuing in the implementation plan or the work plan that staff will bring forward to show you what that actually looks likely, what steps we would actually have to undertake to get those done. So hopefully we'll be able to present a revised strategic priority chart to council in March twenty twenty-two for approval.
Great. Thank you. Questions from council, comments? Counselor Thorburn. Oh, you're muted, Counselor.
Just like the CIO, we've accomplished a lot under very difficult conditions and that's the next report. Well done, Tammy. Thank you.
I like seeing all the things that are completed.
Yeah.
Me too.
Okay. What are you gonna do with all your spare time?
It's not just my time.
I know. Well, if you have any questions, please return to CIO. And of course, on Wednesday, we're going to dive back into this. Our last item before our in-camera meeting under business arising unfinished business is ten point one, the recommendation of the municipal joint service board amendments to chapter two hundred and three solid waste bylaw. This is the second and final reading. So we've obviously had the first reading. We had a presentation from DMJSB on this and the changes regarding especially the compost and the issues with the biodegradable bags that are not really biodegradable and the problems it's caused. So I don't know if, Tammy, if you have anything to add on that, it's.
No, those are basically the main changes to us. There's been a few changes to just the definition of non-recyclable paper and what that entails. So deleting paper plates or paper cups and adding a little bit more clarity around waxed drinking cups and those types of things. But the main change, as you indicated, is the bags that you can put within your green bin and eliminating those plastic. Well, they say they're compostable, but they cause problems with the equipment at the waste site in terms of the process for processing organic material. It jams up the equipment. I'd be eliminating that.
Any questions on this one? Is someone prepared to make a motion, please? Counselor McDonald.
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amended chapter two zero three solid waste bylaw as presented in document twenty-one dash one six four. Adopt as bylaw and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section one six eight of the municipal government act.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Conklin. Good discussion with the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you, folks. Thank you, staff. Lots of great reports, lots of actionable items, which is what we want. And I appreciate everyone's time. And I guess the one advantage to the virtual meetings is nobody had to travel in wintry conditions to town hall. So with that, we have an in-camera meeting. You'll leave this meeting after Patrick clears us and you'll go and open the separate meeting, the separate invite, please. With no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Thorburn, seconded by Counselor Frazier. We are adjourned. See you shortly, folks.